Like to call the Town of Clinton Planning Board meeting, virtual meeting, to order at 7:30 on March 2nd, 2021. Due to COVID-19 pandemic and pursuant to executive order number 202.1 issued on March 12th, 2020, suspending the open meetings law and emergency state and federal bans on large meetings or gatherings. The Town of Clinton Planning Board scheduled for March 2nd, 2021, will be held electronically via Zoom instead of a public meeting open for the public to attend in person. Members of the public may view the board meeting as it is live streamed on YouTube. slash planning-board dash videos slash. A transcript of the meeting will be posted on the town's website at a later date. Okay, the first item on the agenda is the Rossman area variance. Do we have anybody here for that application?
Adam, you're muted.
Hello.
Hello. And you are?
I'm Adam Rossman. I own, I'm the owner of 110 Mountain View.
Okay, Adam, this is a, your application is for a variance. This is a two-step process. The planning board, which you're in front of now, will go over your application and make a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals, either yay, nay, or neutral. And then you'll appear before them and they will make the final decision on, on your variance. Okay?
Understood. Thank you.
So if you can briefly explain to us what you got here and we'll go from there.
I'm, yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Karen Payson, who is a longtime resident of Reinbeck and also our architect.
Hi, I'm Karen Payson and thank you, Arlene.
Yep, hold on, I gotta get it.
Sure thing. Well, the, the short story about why we're here is that Adam and Elizabeth have a flag lot on Mountain View Road. And we have a house that we got permits for last year is under construction. And we designed it to fit into the land in a certain way. It's, it's steep to get up to that house site. And we have the house set at the back of the site. And we have the pool in the front of the site. But it's almost 1,000 feet from the road. So Arlene will show you the, the diagrams that my office put together. But anyway, the pool was on the permit set, but we weren't asking for a pool permit. So about a month ago, the pool vendor applied for permit. And we received a denial letter from the zoning administrator. So actually, could you go to page one, please, Arlene? Yeah. The aerial, there you go. Thanks very much. So this shows you the subject property. It's five and a third acres. And you can see its relationship to Mountain View Road, which is the access to the property. And you can sort of vaguely see the driveway. And this is from the county. This, so this is before anything was on the site. We have a foundation there now. And so you can also see, and I wanted to show this particular image because the matter that was called to our attention by the zoning administrator was that we're not allowed to put a pool between the front wall of the principal building and the road. And so that's really what we're asking for variance for. And so you can see that between the property and the road, there is another house. And so this house is actually behind, it's behind the backyard of the house closest to it. So could we go to page two, please? And just, yeah, just focus on the, the plan. And if you can, Arlene, could you minimize the column to the right? You've got that little arrow there. Yeah, there we go. And so what you can see there, it's small on my screen. But you can see that the pool is highlighted in blue. And we've drawn just dimensions to show that we have the front yard setback is 100 feet. And, and so the front yard setback is for the bulk, the building area of the site. It doesn't include the pole. So we've got that front yard setback at 100 feet. And then we're set, we're setting the pool yet another 208 feet behind the front yard setback. And so we're asking for a variance because we just feel that it's the right place to put it on the site and it has no impact on the neighborhood. It has no negative impact on anybody. You can't even see it. It's a wooded lot back there. So I can give more detail and give my arguments, but that's really the nutshell of it. And I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Justin?
Yeah, thank you for that explanation. I was, I didn't realize that I had this original, you know, variance back in 2019, when the little corner of the lot, you know, peeked into the setback. But I think there was a pool mentioned at that time. We just didn't have to, to plan it. But I, I don't, I don't have any questions if anyone else doesn't. As you can see from the pictures, there's kind of some thick woods on either side that they've carved out to create that driveway and wrapped around. So you're not going to be able to see it from the houses or the road. And I believe the property in back at least last time was like a 100 and something acre property. No one's even close to having any kind of a building that would have a view from the backside. So, you know, in, in, in the, excuse me, there were two denial letters. I think the first one was incorrect. And then it said that the pool is getting denied because it was, you know, it within, it was like the setback, the front, the front setback or in front of the house, but it's just, there's a separate provision specifically for pools, which say it can never be in front of the house. And so that's really the only one they're asking for because they are, there's no setback issue here. I don't know if we've granted one like that before, but I don't have an issue given the, the house side of doing that here.
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
It's Paul. Can I just comment? I, this particular provision seems to be a source of confusion. It's in front of the house provision. And I don't think, just for the record, this is my humble opinion. I don't think it applies in a situation like this where the structure is not in the setback. It says, it gives you an either or choice and it says whatever is less restrictive is what you'll impose.
Well, that was the old, that was the first letter, Paul. That one you got.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm talking about the, yeah, the, the zoning law provision that he's citing. It is, it is because it's in front of the house, right? That's what we're talking about?
Yes, because it's in front of the house. It's between the house and the road.
But, but Paul, there's two that are mentioned in the application, 25022, right, is the accessory structure. Yeah. That's right. It's not that one. That letter was thrown out and he redid it. And he said it's 25074B, which is only for swimming pools. And so there's a specific swimming pool section that says it just, a swimming pool can never be in front of a house.
Okay. Thanks. I,
I think we all agree on the first point, which is why the letter got.
Interesting. Okay. I withdraw my earlier comment and I, I have no, I, I was trying to help out here. I have no problem with this situation or giving a positive recommendation.
Okay.
Thank you, Justin.
I, we, we all have the same thought process.
Does, does anybody else have any questions for either Justin or the applicant? My only, my only question here, and it looks like it's pretty much solved, is that that the applicant doesn't have any plans of doing any clear cutting of the trees because they form a natural barrier between the house in front, the house on the side, and a maybe house in the back. So that would be a question I'd ask of the, of the applicant.
I think it's a reasonable question. But I think that there's probably even less of a desire to be seen than there is, you know, to protect the public from seeing, you know. I think their principal desire for this site to begin with, which they bought a really long time ago, is its privacy.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
It's a mutual benefit.
Okay. All right, Justin?
Yeah, okay. I have a resolution of the Town of Clinton Planning Board making a positive recommendation to the zoning board of appeals on the requested area variance to section 250 74B to permit construction of a private swimming pool in front of the principal permitted use as requested by Adam and Elizabeth Rossman on property located at 110 Mountain View Road, Reinbeck, New York's tax grid number and an AR5 zoning district. Whereas the applicant is requesting permission to construct a private swimming pool in front of the principal permitted use on a 5.36 acre flag-shaped lot. Property is in an AR5 zoning district. The property is within the ridgeline protection area and single-family residences are exempted from 250-15 of the town code regarding ridgeline scenic historical protection overlay district regulations. The property is not in a CEA. The variance requested is not substantial as the site is heavily wooded and the structure will not be visible from the road or nearby buildings. Furthermore, the lot is steeply sloped and the principal structure is already located in the setback area. So construction of a pool behind the house would encroach even further within the setback. An undesirable change will not be produced in the character of the neighborhood or be detrimental to nearby properties. As the property to the east is 139 acres and the structures on the property are not visible from the proposed residence. Sorry. From the proposed, proposed residence. Proposed variance should not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood. The alleged difficulty is self-created, but should not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance, considering the surrounding conditions and natural screening. Now therefore be it resolved that planning boards making a positive recommendation for approval to the Clinton ZBA for this requested variance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Justin, aye.
Jack, aye.
Very aye.
All aye.
Sarah, aye.
Art, aye. Opposed? So moved. Okay, that's, folks, that's step one. Arlene will give you the next available date for the zoning board of appeals. And good luck to you.
Thank you very much for your patience and thank you for listening. And Arlene, I presume you'll just send me an email, right?
Yeah, the 25th.
The 25th? Okay, terrific. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening. Good night. Bye.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the DeMello area variance, another Mountain View Road. Is anybody here for that?
I, I don't know who's, Karen Zarella? Karen, how about the, any of the other people? Michael Dupree, maybe?
No, that's.
This is Darren, right?
Yeah. That's it.
Okay.
It for this, Darren? Okay.
Yeah, I'm here.
Back again, huh, Darren?
I guess so. Two weeks really flies.
What, well, you know the drill. This is step one. The ver, for getting a variance. The planning board will review the application. Will make a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. Yay, nay, or neutral. And then they will make the final decision on that. Okay? So if you can explain briefly to us what you're here for?
Absolutely. Arlene, I, I submitted a, a simplified version of the land plan. Maybe that's the easiest thing to pull up.
You know, right? Yeah, I got it. Go ahead. You could start.
Okay, so I believe we're here for two different variances tonight. We have a property of 13 Mountain View Road, all the way at the west end of Mountain View Road. 10.4 acres in size. And what we're dealing with is we have a main residence where we plan to replace an existing addition. And the issue with the main residence as it sits today is it does not meet the 100-foot setback requirement. So because the building is only 11 feet from the road and we want to make modification to it, additional modifications to it. It's been modified quite a bit over time. We're told we need to get a variance from the setback requirement relating to the front yard. So that is the main residence. And one of two variances, I believe, we're here to discuss tonight. Then beyond the main residence, there are four accessory structures located on the property. We know four accessory structures to be an issue. It exceeds the maximum allowable in the zone. And the reason that we are talking specifically about those four accessory structures is that we are proposing to convert one of those four existing buildings to a detached accessory dwelling. So there brings up the need for our second variance. Although they're all existing structures, they do exceed the number allowed in the zone. And when we get the, yeah, that one would work, Arlene. What's that?
You want the site plan or you want the drawing with the?
I think the drawing that has just the buildings and on it. We can always go back to the big site plan. There you go. That's probably the most helpful exhibit. So at the bottom of the screen, there's the main house that I mentioned at the beginning. The area in red shows the future footprint as it grafts onto the existing main house in gray. And as you can see, that building is too close to the road. It does not meet the front yard setback. In fact, the entire residence and addition is within the required 100-foot setback. So we need some variance relief there in order to work on that structure. And then if we sort of work left to right, the stone cottage, the gray box towards the middle of the screen there, that is the building that we are proposing to convert to a detached accessory dwelling. An existing two-car garage proposed for conversion into a residence, a detached residence. In the middle of the screen in blue is the second of our four accessory structures. That is the swimming pool and associated amenities. Again, all existing. And then if we work towards the right of the screen, what's called barn is an existing stable that we're proposing to add an addition to down the road. That's three of our four current accessory structures. And then circling back down the screen to what's called garage is our fourth structure. An 1,100 square foot poultry shed, it's called, that we're converting to a garage to, to use for cars.
That's good. Jack?
Yeah, this is, this is one that I think has taught me something about overthinking these applications. I, I, I looked at it and on the first variance, the, the 100-foot. You know, the, the ZBA has looks like a fair amount of latitude to consider whether the variance will affect the characters of the neighborhood and adversely impact conditions of neighborhood or what have you. But all they're asking is to allow the, the structure within the 100-foot setback. So do we look at the whole problem and not, not a problem? Do we look at the whole proposal? Do we think about the addition, which is back from the, the, the setback? Do we worry about aesthetics? And after some thought, I, I came to the conclusion that if anybody's going to think about that, it's the ZBA and not us. That what we're being asked for is make a recommendation about allowing a building that is 37 plus feet from the road that has always been 37 plus feet from the road since 1790 something. And it seems to me that we can stop there and we, we shouldn't be getting into broader questions of aesthetics and things of that sort. So I, you know, it seems to me we should make a, a positive recommendation on that. And I have a resolution. And in the same way, the second variance request for four buildings, they're all existing buildings. We're not being asked on this application to talk about the accessory dwelling unit as an accessory dwelling unit. We're not being asked to talk about expanding the barn. All we're being asked for is to allow four existing structures instead of three. And again, keeping things narrowed, that, that one also seems to me to be an easy one. We're all four structures already exist and have existed for some time. So I, I don't have a problem. If anybody would like to talk about the, the scope of review and what issues we get into, I'm, I'm happy to do it, but I don't think we have to go there.
Anybody have any questions for Jack or Darren? Okay, I have, Darren, I have, I have a question on the addition remodeling on the main house.
Sure.
The area that's, that's shaded in red here.
Yes.
Is that, is that part existing now? Or is it a pure addition? I'm just curious.
The,
because it said, it said some of it was going to be taken away.
Correct.
Going to remodel it, so.
So what you're looking at is the future footprint as added to. So there is a portion of the proposed addition that is also on this drawing shown in gray. Because what we're doing is we're replacing an existing addition with a larger addition. So the red is the addition to the footprint, but it is not the extent, the full extent of the work that's being proposed because that does also include some of what is gray. But important to note, none of that gray to be redone is part of the historic house. It's all replacing an addition done in the 1990s with new addition done today. So what this shows is footprint in the future, which is red as, as added to. It does not do a good job of showing you the full extent of the construction to the house. That would be something that we could flip to the actual building plan for.
Art, you're getting to, you put your finger on exactly what I was thinking about. The gray area is, is I understand the drawings and I don't, is going to look quite different than it does now. So is the fact that they're asking for a variance on the distance from the road open up looking at what the, the, the structure on the road will look like as opposed to simply its distance? And I, I kind of think it doesn't.
No, I, Jack, I was basically curious. What was, what was new and what was old in there? And I didn't, I wanted it just to clarify that. And you might, Darren, you might want to clarify that with the ZBA when you talk to them.
Yeah, certainly. I'll try to put together.
Yeah, before they ask the question.
Sure. And, and the question did come up last week about the height of the addition. And I did get the answer on that, by the way. I know it's not relevant to what we're talking about, but it is 24 feet. So it's certainly within the 35-foot height restriction. And it is lower than the house. So it will all be behind the mass of the existing historic house. You wouldn't see it anymore.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Okay, go for it, Jack.
Whereas applicants Michael Clark and Charmaine DeMello seek two area variances pursuant to section 25098D1 of the zoning code for their property of 13 Mountain View Road in the Town of Clinton, long number. First applicant seek a variance from the required minimum 100-foot setback in this AR5 zoned property for the primary residence on the property, which would be setback only 37.7 feet from Mountain View Road. This is where the existing front of the residence is. While applicants propose a substantial restructure of the home, it will be to the rear of the building. And so the approximate 1,000 additional square feet and other considerable work will not increase the non-conformity of the front yard setback beyond what it is today. The house was first built in 1793 when it was common for homes to be as near the road as possible. The zoning board appears to have great latitude. The zoning code, excuse me, appears to give great latitude to the ZBA to consider whether proposed variance will affect the character of the neighborhood, adversely impact the physical conditions of the neighborhood, et cetera. Since the role of the planning board is limited to making a recommendation to the ZBA, we act narrowly and consider only the distance from the front of the residence to the road. We do not consider the impact that a substantial change to the appearance of the existing building would have on the view from Mountain View Road, the effect on the historical nature of the building. Applicants say the historical part of the existing home will be unchanged because the restructuring will be limited to a recent addition, et cetera. Considering the design of the building, just because a variance is sought for its location, may argue we get into issues of aesthetics that may be beyond our role. Judged by that standard, the distance of the residence from the road is unchanged by the proposal. The 37-foot distance causes no change in the character of the neighborhood. The benefit of the owner could not be achieved in a different way, short of tearing down the entire building and starting 100 feet back, where their proposed addition might still cause the same impact on the view from the road. And the variance will not have an adverse impact on the environment. The variance sought solely regarding from the distance of the road is not substantial and is self-created. The second variance applicant seek is to the number of accessory structures. The permitted number of accessory structures is three section. Applicants state that there are currently four accessory building, accessory structures and seek a variance to allow them. All four buildings are pre-existing structures. Therefore, we conclude that simply in terms of the number of structures allowed under 25022, the variance sought is not substantial, will not result in an undesirable change to the neighborhood, cannot be achieved in another fashion and will not have an adverse impact on the environment. Applicants state that they intend to convert one of the structures to an accessory dwelling unit and at some point to expand another. The proposed accessory dwelling unit is governed by section 25029. And we do not here make any recommendations or ruling with regard to that section. Nor do we consider here any site plan with respect to possible changes to the other buildings since that is not part of the variance request. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board makes a positive recommendation to the zoning board of appeals regarding applicant's requests described above for variance of the minimum front yard setback from 100 feet to 37.7 feet with regard to the principal residence and a positive recommendation regarding applicant's request for a variance to allow the four accessory, existing accessory buildings.
Discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Justin, aye.
Jack, aye.
Very aye.
Sarah, aye.
Okay, opposed? So moved? Okay.
Could I just ask a procedural question about lead agency? Because the county brought that up as we're processing a septic approval for this property. They were asking if the ZBA or the planning board was going to be lead agency on this one?
With regards to what, for variance or special permit?
Well, just, they're, they're just interested in, you know, a secret determination, someone declaring themselves lead agency and, and, you know, accepting the EAF, the short form. And I would assume it's a short form, all that's needed here. And then, you know, making a negative declaration.
When you do the special permit, we don't do that for variance.
Not at the.
Area variance is type two. Yeah, we don't do seeker.
Okay. Yeah, I thought it was a strange question they'd be asking at this point, but.
What, what are going to do that, um, when you do the, the special permit with accessory dwelling? Because you're increasing the size of the septic, right?
We're increasing the size of the septic, which is why they're looking for someone to, to deem themselves lead agency.
That's going to be for when you go for the special permit?
That wouldn't happen at the variance stage. Got it.
All right. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you, everyone.
Arlene will let you know, send you an email. Uh, Arlene will let you know, uh, send you an email on when the next meeting is and, uh, good luck.
All right. Thanks. See you soon.
Thank you.
Okay, don't go away, Jack.
I'm not going nowhere.
Okay, the next, uh, item on the agenda, uh, is Cat and Dog Properties LLC wetlands permit. Is, uh, do we have anybody here for that? I think that was Kristen, wasn't it?
I, yes, Kristen Zarella here.
Hi there. How are you, Kristen?
Good, how are you?
Good. Okay, uh, briefly explain what was going on, what's been going on and, uh, where we are at this stage?
Um, so, uh, per the last planning board meeting, um, we, uh, decided that we still do require a wetlands permit. Uh, it was recommended by the planning board to proceed with doing some further investigation and onsite measuring to truly determine based on the existing landscape and terrain, uh, whether or not our house actually resides within the one hundred foot, uh, required wetland setback. And for that investigation, I did submit a report on that. Um, I don't know if Arlene, if you have that available or.
I'm getting it. You still want?
Yes, so here's the report. So I did go back to the site and physically measured from the, um, the water line. And I took some photographs for representation. And it, I concluded that based on this, uh, measuring that our, the corner of our house actually is at a hundred feet nine inches as it currently uh, is determined to be built. So I use the, uh, existing maple tree that is on the site as the center line. From that point, the water, the, the, um, the water line was at approximately seventy-seven feet. Our actual structure of the house is at twenty-three feet nine inches from the center line of that tree taken. So with that determination, uh, the variance is not in fact for, I mean, sorry, the, um, the wetlands permit is not in fact for the, uh, built structure itself. It is just for applying for the proposed dock and the stone patio as well as the, uh, permeable grass-like walk pathways down to the water's edge. Um, it was determined that the previous walkway dock and accessory uh, structures as well as even the house was within the setback. And I don't, where is the square footage? I think that was about thirty-one hundred square feet that was within the setback. So our proposed walking paths, dock, um, and patio is much less at approximately twenty-three hundred square feet. So with that being said, uh, we are proposing that we're giving a better condition than what was previously existing. And, uh, given the, the constraint of wanting to be able to obviously access the, the water, uh, we're, uh, submitting this wetlands permit for approval.
Okay. Yep, um, I think this again is, is a pretty straightforward one, but a couple of questions. Um, because I've only looked at the property in the snow. I, I, I don't know, you know, about other docks on the pond. Are, are there other properties on Brown's Pond that have docks? Do you know?
Um, yes, there's actually some you go look across the lake and there's some that come off of the water's edge. I mean, I haven't been able to go on the property itself, but I would say they come out a solid twenty-five to thirty, maybe even more plus feet into the water. So it's interesting to me what the, uh, what is allowed versus what is not technically allowed or what is regulated per se. So I had done, tried to do research and what would be allowed or not. Uh, we're not proposing to go out that far into the water, but you go out there, you could see that there are previous docks or existing docks rather that go out pretty fairly significantly into Brown's Ponds.
There's a lot of docks there, Jack.
Yeah, okay, I, I, I assume there were. I just wanted to be.
Yeah, there's, there's a bunch of them out there. Uh, the Cleary House, which I think is almost adjacent to this property. I remember they, they had a dock out there too, very similar situation.
This dock is gonna be larger than the others, but is it, I i- is it similar in sort of structure and size to other docks on, on the, on Brown's Pond?
Uh, I'm, I'm without measuring other docks, I can't, I can't, um, say beyond what I can visually see from the water's edge. But I would, I would, I would be, um, I would like to say yes. It is similar in, in atmosphere and similarities of other people who have, um, uh, wanted to have access to the water's edge.
Okay, and are, are there gonna be lights or any kind of structure on, on the dock?
Presumably there'd be something of this nature, but we'll be sure that it would be more, uh, o- ambiance type lighting that would be downlit and not take away from the natural environment, more for visual safety reasons.
Okay, downlit was the magic word. Um, there is one issue that I, Paul spotted and, uh, I, I wanted to call to your attention. You say this is not regulated by BEC and that's fine. But if you go on parcel access, it looks like it may be federally, Brown's Pond may be federally, uh, regulated. And I wanted to flag for you that you should look at, uh, whether there are federal regulations or an agency that is governing Brown's Pond, cause it may well be. And if there are, that you comply with, uh, whatever their, uh, requirements are.
Okay.
And I think what we can do is, you know, uh, give our approval subject to a- any kind of, uh, federal permit or regulation that may apply. Other than that, I don't have any problems.
You have a, uh, resolution, Jack?
I do.
Very good.
Uh, applicant Cat and Dog Properties LLC seeks a wetlands permit pursuant to section two fifty seventy-eight. The zoning codes respect to proposed construction and its property at thirty-nine Lake Pleasant Drive in the town of Clinton number. Applicant has pre, had previously combined three small non-conforming lots in this AR five zone into a single larger, but still non-conforming property. And with the permit demolished the house that was on one of the properties, applicant proposes to build a new house, which will be slightly over one hundred feet from the edge of the pond, one hundred feet nine inches. Thus not within the scope of this application. Applicant proposes to construct a dock patio and a walkway between them, which would be within the controlled areas defined by the wetlands regulations. The proposed structures are similar in function to already existing or previous dock, walkway and patio. Indeed, because the previous house was partially within the controlled area. The proposed dock, walkway and patio will comprise only two thousand one hundred and thirty square feet in the controlled area as opposed to three thousand one hundred and sixty-four feet in the controlled area occupied by the previous house patio, walkway and dock. However, the new dock will be nine hundred and sixty square feet as opposed to the previous dock of two sixty-five. And the new patio will be seven hundred and seventy square feet as opposed to the prior patio of four hundred and seventy-nine square feet. There are other properties on Brown's Pond which have docks. Applicant states that the proposed dock will be consistent in design with those others. Um, if there will be lights, uh, on the dock, they, uh, are to be downward direction and comply with any applicable rules. Because the, um, function of the new structures are consistent with the prior ones. And because the total square footage within the controlled area, which will be built smaller than was within the controlled area previously. The proposed structures do not seem to present a risk to Brown's Pond or to the controlled area. Applicants state that Brown's Pond is not regulated by the DEC. However, Dutchess County Parcel Access indicates that Brown's Pond is federally regulated. Therefore, applicants should determine if there are federal requirements or permits that have to be better obtained before construction begins. We made no findings with respect to any such federal requirements. Accordingly, the planning board finds in accordance with section two fifty dash seventy-eight that the proposed structures within the controlled area are consistent with two fifty seventy-eight's policy of preserving and conserving water body functions at the permit sought is at least as restrictive as would result under application of New York's freshwater, freshwater wetlands are compatible with the public health and welfare and cannot be relocated to reduce the intrusion into the water body. Now therefore be it resolved, the town of Clinton Planning Board grants applicants requests for a wetlands permits for a dock, walkway and patio within the controlled area on the subject property subject to the condition that applicant comply with any applicable federal regulation and retain any necessary federal permits.
We have a second? We have a second?
Okay.
Second.
Okay, uh, discussion? Okay, um. Okay, um, all in favor?
Very.
There I.
All right.
Got everybody? Opposed? Okay, so moved? Okay. Kristen, you're, uh, you're all set.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, the next, uh, item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is the Almond Wetlands Permit on Seven Horseshoe Trail. Uh, do we have anybody here for that?
Michael.
Uh, I'm here. I think, uh, Mike Todd, who's muted, is here.
Yep, I'm here, sorry. View button wasn't working.
Okay, um. Let us know who you are and, uh, then describe what, uh, what you're here for.
I am Michael Todd, um, representing Rainbow Pools, which we are contracted by Michael Almond to build a pool on his property on Horseshoe Trail.
Okay, um, can you, uh, briefly go over, uh, your plan here?
Sure. Uh, we have a location for a pool near a barn on the Almond's property that is getting close to the wetland boundary. Uh, we have the New York State Authorization, um, where we place the pool, we have the, uh, permit from New York State to put it in that area and we're asking you to review, um, take a look. So basically the Almonds wanna put this pool down. They have a barn, uh, on the property. It's down the hill from the house. Uh, the property flattens out on the other side of the barn. And really with the location of the, uh, septic in the house and not being too far away from any structure, we felt that the the best place to put the pool was down, uh, next to the barn so that it could be used as, um, for what it's being used as now, just accessory structure, um, for the pool area.
Okay, Paul?
Yeah, so I think, I, I, we, Arlene, do we have a drawing or?
Yes, hold on, sorry. Technical issue.
Sorry, okay.
Go ahead.
Well, I can, I can, um, I can give my summary while you're pulling it up. I
Yes.
I think this, I think this is pretty simple. Um, Pete Sataro looked at this uh, situation and, um, the applicant already has, um, a, a permit from DEC. Uh, Pete made a couple of suggestions regarding, um, using a, a silt fence because of the proximity of the construction to the wetland, using a silt fence during construction and also delineating with another fence, uh, a, a limit of, um, disturbance of machinery and things like that. Um, so that those, those be used during construction. Um, but otherwise, you know, there weren't any concerns raised about, you know, the actual installation um, in this area and DEC, as I said, has signed off. Um, and I think m- maybe more to the point, um, the, this wet, particular wetland SP seventeen is a near, is DEC regulated and is twenty, is about twenty-two acres per their mapper and our local law, uh, jurisdictionally is limited to twelve point four, wetlands of twelve point four acres. So, um, my view on this is, um, even though it was referred to us for review, I, I don't believe that a wetland permit from us, given that they already have one from DEC, is required. Um, I, I think we should, I've written up a resolution, well, if the board agrees with that. Um, I've written up a resolution just because they were referred to us and, and I, you know, I think they're entitled to, uh, ruling from us on that. Um, and, uh, but that's my, that's my conclusion, given the limits of our law. Our law does not, our, was not designed to deal with the larger wetlands. They leave that to the DEC. And, um, uh, but I, but I do think Pete's recommendations regarding construction should be, you know, part of any building permit that they got.
You want, we want with the fence?
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
You want the one with the fence, showing the fence?
Um.
Recent submission.
Does the board wanna, does the board want to see the, uh, there, there's a, there was a modified plan per Pete's recommendations that has the silt, uh, area and the, and the construction fence. Uh, and also there's gonna be a fenced area around, a permanent fence around the pool. I think that's required under New York State law, so, or New York Building Code, so. I don't know if we have that, Arlene, or if the board doesn't, you know, if the board agrees with what I'm saying, I'm not sure they may, maybe they do wanna see it.
Does anybody need to, uh, see that? And the question for the applicant, did the, uh, did the DEC require any silt fencing or during construction?
He, he actually, uh, made the suggestion or requirement for silt fence and hay bales, which is, which is fine.
Okay, good.
It's, it's pretty, it, it's, it's not one of these amorphous wetlands that you can't really, you can't really tell when you're at least encroaching on it. So the good thing here is that there is a, uh, a stream boundary that's shown on the map. And so it's, it's very easy to see, you know, if, if the silt fence, the chance that it's not working or the, the hay bales are not working and then, you know, no, no one, no one will go near that. So it, it's, it's actually pretty straightforward from a, from a construction, working logistical standpoint as well, so.
Okay, um, Paul, I'm, I'm kind of unsure whether we really need to give them a permit, but they have been referred to us. Um, what's the, uh, I'm thinking of the board? Does anybody have an opinion on this? Okay, I, I don't see why we, we couldn't issue, um, the permit, um, but then again, I don't see why we necessarily have to.
Well, what, um, I wrote it up as basically an explanation.
Okay.
I, of, of sort of why we are not issuing a permit, but basically saying, you know, they're good to go.
Okay.
I can read it if it doesn't, if it doesn't do what we need to do, we, I'm happy to change it. I just, you want me to just read it quickly and?
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay, uh, so here goes. So whereas the town of Clinton Planning Board has received an application from Michael and Nancy Almond for a controlled area permit pursuant to section two fifty dash seventy-eight of the zoning law allowing the construction of a ten by fifty foot pool and fence on a forty-five acre parcel located at Seven Horseshoe Trail, which. On a forty-five acre parcel located at seven horseshoe trail, which is located in the AR five district in the town of Clinton. Two, the proposed pool will be built within one hundred feet of. N Y D E C wetland S P seventeen. Which comprises approximately twenty-two acres and therefore exceeds the maximum jurisdictional limit. Of twelve point four acres as set forth in section two fifty seventy-eight D eight. And I quote, wetlands of twelve point four acres or greater. Regulated by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation Law. Shall be regulated by the Department of Environmental Conservation and shall not be subject to this section, end quote. In addition, the proposed pool and related construction will not occur in a quote controlled area, end quote. As defined in section two fifty dash one oh five. And I quote, for purposes of section two fifty seventy-eight, the controlled area shall mean. And according to subpart two, any wetland. Between five acres and twelve point four acres and the area within one hundred feet of the boundary of such wetland, end quote. Paragraph three, the applicants have obtained a permit. From N Y S D E C dated February seventeen, twenty twenty-one. Relating to the proposed activity and shall comply with the special conditions set forth. In the D E C permit. For the town engineer has inspected the applicant's submission. And noted that a D E C. Permit has been obtained relating to the proposed activity, per the town engineer's recommendations. The applicants have depicted on the plan a silt fence around the boundary of the wetland and an orange construction fence. Delineating the limits of disturbance within the wetland buffer, five, based on the foregoing. The planning board has concluded that the proposed pool and fence. Will not have a significant effect on the ecology of the wetlands, the public health and welfare. Flood hazards or water supply in the area. Now therefore be it resolved, the town of Clinton planning board determines. The controlled area permit pursuant to section fifty seventy-eight is not required. And that applicants may proceed with construction upon the receipt of a building permit issued by the building inspector. And be it further resolved, the planning board recommends that the building inspector requires a condition. Of issuance of the building permit that the applicants be required to comply with the town engineer's recommendations. With respect to installation of a silt fence around the boundary of the wetland and a construction fence. Delineating the areas of non disturbance within the wetland buffer set forth above and is depicted on the applicant's revised submission. That's the end.
Second.
Discussion? Well, okay, all in favor?
All right.
There.
Hard eye? Opposed? Okay, so moved. Okay, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy the pool.
Thanks a lot.
We'll be over this summer.
You're all welcome, we'd love to have you. As long as my contractor can get it done in time.
Always no problem.
All right, I'm making the hot dogs. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, the next item on the agenda. Is the Hopman. Two lot subdivision. Is anybody? Here for that?
Yes, Marie Welch.
Hi, Marie, how are you?
I'm good thanks, how are you?
Good, good, been a while since we've seen you.
I, yeah, I don't know where I've been. Other towns, I guess.
Okay. You want to briefly explain? This subdivision for us?
Sure, and I'll mention that this is the second meeting I've been to tonight on this application, the town of Mylan also met tonight. So I was there for their, they, they actually opened their public hearing tonight, but they held it open. Because they wanted to do a site visit. But while Arlene is calling up the map and. I appreciate that we were put on the agenda tonight. I wasn't sure we were going to be because I had a few more things to submit, but. It's pretty simple subdivision, it's two lots. The total acreage, it's one lot now by deed, but it's two tax parcels because part of the land is in the town of Clinton. And part of the land is in the town of Mylan. It fronts on Amityville Road in Clinton and Enterprise Road in Mylan. And the town line is what we're proposing for the division lines, that there are no overlapping tax parcels. And so you have what would be thirteen, yeah, thirteen point zero four acres would be the remaining land in the town of Mylan. If the property line goes through the division and five point one nine acres in the town of Clinton. We show the town line with tie lines because it is the stream and the stream has a tendency to move over time. And so the line would move with the stream, as is the case with that sort of a boundary. But we do have the tie line so that anybody computing this would be able to get from one end of the property to the other and to be able to get approximate area. So the, the acreages are plus or minus because of the. Movement of the potential movement of the town line. We do show the setback lines and we also show, as you can see, some wetlands. There are two areas of A C O E wetlands, the wetland A and the wetland B, they're totally within the town of Clinton. And then we have wetland C is a D E C wetland and that's both in Clinton and Mylan. They have had an engineer out on the site, he's done some soil tests, the soil tests were done several months ago, as with wetland flags were done almost twelve, about eight or ten months ago. The soil tests were done and the engineer has determined. They're looking to put, if you look at the Mylan lot where it says area lot eight A, town of Mylan, that's the approximate house site. For that lot and the Clinton lot, it would be just behind that one hundred foot setback in between. Wetland A and the D E C, you're right about in that area. So that's where we are.
Okay.
This is, this is me. Thank you, Marie, so. But what, just before I give my summary, I, Marie, the. On parcel access, the Clinton lot is like four point one acres. And where do we pick up the extra acres, that, is that? Is that, is, go ahead.
If you look at parcel access, they show a jog on the property line along Sangaris. And that jog doesn't really exist, I don't have, actually.
Pull it up, let me pull up, let me pull up the parcel access, this way you have an idea.
Yeah, I can probably point you out, but they, they don't show, if you look at my map, you see that the. Southerly line of the lot eight B in the town of Clinton. You have the, where L one is and then you have a property comes northerly and then it goes westerly. The southerly line of eight B, that town parcel access shows a jog there and shows part of the property further north than it really is. So by doing the boundary survey. We were able, you know, it's, it's just, it's a drafting error at parcel access, really.
Okay, so this is literally, there's no, there's no portion of the Clinton lot that's in Mylan, so that's what I was just wondering.
You see that the parcel seven seven zero eight seven four?
Yeah.
And you see how the property line goes westerly and then northerly and then westerly again? That westerly terminus should be down where that other line is at the back of seven one oh eight four nine. So instead of being, I don't know how, I keep trying to do stuff on my computer and I'm not on.
That's what I'm doing, I'm like.
Can you see it, Marie?
Oh yeah, no, I can see it. If, if you bring it stutterly. Okay, go a little, right. But, but that line, it goes kind of northwesterly, really would be true due west. And, and jog into that other. Angle on the seven one oh eight four nineties, so it's, it's, it's a drafting. Scrivener's error, I think, was the term that we use way back when.
Okay. Okay, so. So this, for the board, so this seemingly simple. Two lot subdivision has. Some interesting twists to it, obviously, one of them is it straddles the, the town boundaries. And Mylan has already started the, the review process and has declared, let me talk about process first, so. They've declared lead agency over the whole subdivision. Application and they've started and as Marie just said, they apparently held their first hearing tonight. And so the process question, you know, we've, we've received a letter from them asking us to agree to their. Declaration of lead agency. Or so, or telling them that we don't. So that's one issue for decision and then, you know, how do you proceed with this and? Basically, you know, my read is, I, I think it's fine. To let them serve as lead agency, we then become an involved agency. Because we have to approve this as, as well as they do. So we have, you know, the rights to review and approve or not as we see fit, so we're not really giving up much by giving up lead agency. As I read the guidance, we had, we had, but I don't think we have it anymore. The option of holding a joint hearing with them, I think that sounds like that's already, that's already moot. So we would, you know.
I'm going to interrupt, Paul, they, they did hold their meeting open.
Okay.
They did not close the public.
Yeah, I, to be honest, I was thinking, you know. Given the constraints we're operating under these days, you know, I was like, why don't we just? The idea of coordinating a hearing with them just sounded so complicated to me, I was like, why don't we just? You know, hold their own hearing. But that's, that's another issue, I, you know, I suppose we could reach out to them and say, you know, can we join in, but. But otherwise, we would review this, you know, whether, there's a lot that's entirely in the town of Clinton, so. You know, we have to apply the usual standards to that. And so. On that point, I, you know, I don't have any, I don't see that the lot itself meets all of the. You know, the. Size acreage and dimension, dimensional requirements. I think the one issue that I can see is, as Marie said, there are physical constraints, mainly wetlands. On this, on the Clinton piece and, you know, per our prior practice, we would want. To assure ourselves, this is a buildable lot, we want to see feasible access. And I think, you know, a feasible building area and, and, and also. Have a certification from an engineer that water and sewer septic systems are feasible. On the lot. You know, before we would give final approval. And otherwise, we would just, you know, proceed to preliminary plat. You know, when Marie's ready. I, I didn't hear what you said.
Sketch, what about the sketch?
Yeah, I, that, that's, that's the, we would, I've prepared a resolution for. Sketch plan approval with, you know, that. Sort of with all those considerations in mind and, and saying that we agree to Mylan serving as lead agency. I left open the hearing issue because I just didn't know what.
I think we.
Really know what we would do there, I think we should just do the here, I think we should just. Do a hearing and, and not take any chances.
We have our own neighbors, we have our own property.
Yeah.
Properties on our.
I think that's right, yeah, I agree. It won't take up more, it won't take up anymore, you know, we, we're going to get, we're going to get a preliminary plat and then. Assuming we have everything, we can stop the hearing and then, you know, this could be relatively simple. At that point. But I do think we need to see. The engineering, you know, not, not the specific engineering, but just the feasibility. Opinion. From an engineer and, and we, and we typically require. That access be shown, feasible access be shown, which includes. The, our highway department, you know, saying there's sight distance for whatever the, wherever the driveway is going to be.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
Reasonable.
Anybody? Have anything? You're okay with that, is that what you said?
I'm okay with it, how about the rest of the board?
Sounds sensible.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's sensible, Paul.
Wow.
Guiding us through.
You're going to do the engineering, do we need the town engineer, what are you saying?
Well, I, I think, so, I think. You know, I, I. I consider, we, we could consider, you know, creating a small escrow, I. I think, you know, what we would do is, Marie, we would submit, Marie would submit a letter from their engineer. Saying, you know, I've looked at this and there are feasible sites. For well and septic and, and we would want to see a building envelope that includes those. Although it doesn't have to be, you know, it doesn't have to be an actual house site, but just that there's a location. On the parcel that we're, we're well and septic. Could be, you know, installed, constructed. With, with a engineer's letter, now would you be getting? Health department approval for this?
They're, I believe they are submitting to health department. Definitely for the Mylan lot because the owner wants to build there.
Okay.
But I believe he was also going to submit to the, for the Clinton lot. Because you can sell a lot for more money if it's board of health approved.
Yeah. So that would even, so if they had board of health approval. You know. I think we would be, you know, we could show it to Pete, but I think it would be, we'd be in pretty good shape. You know, with, that, those, that strikes me as the hardest part of this, is just finding that. Those locations.
Yeah, that would be.
We could, maybe when we get the, the preliminary, if we feel that we want Pete to look at it, we could, we could do that.
The preliminary, you mean where the engineer is going to design the septic system?
The, the, when we get your, the next submission, if, if we want, you know, when, when you come back for preliminary.
Okay.
If the board feels they want, you know, the town engineer to look at it, we could set up a small escrow and just, then we could, we could do it then, I think.
Okay.
Between that, you know, we're going to have to set a hearing, so there's going to be two more meetings, it sounds like. I'm sure you're glad to hear that.
Well, like I say, we're, you know, they would like to build in the spring, as long as we're, you know. It's, I mean, I'm not unhappy with the discussion tonight, that's everything you've asked for, like you said, it is reasonable.
Do you know if they do type one or type two?
They did type two. I'll check mine, that's what I'm pretty sure they did type two.
Well.
You mean talking about Mylan?
Mylan.
They probably, they did unlisted.
Actually, yeah, I don't. I don't know that they even.
Didn't classify it?
They didn't classify it because they still have the public hearing open.
It sounds like it was on, maybe unlisted on, it's not type one, I mean, it's. So unlisted coordinate, they, they, I think they, they're coordinating with us, so. I assume it was coordinated, but. But yeah, we don't have to worry about seeker. They have to do the seeker, so. We just have to, we have to tell them what we've done.
Okay.
Okay, so. I've written up a, I've written up a. Resolution that I can read. This is, and this is sketch plan, this is granting sketch plan approval. With condition, with various conditions, so. This is, it reads, whereas the town of Clinton playing board has received an application for subdivision from the Hopman family trust. For the purpose of subdividing a eighteen point two, two, three acre parcel located on Amityville Road in the town of Clinton and Enterprise Road. The town of Mylan into two lots consisting of a plus minus thirteen point oh four acre. Proposed lot eight A in the town of Mylan and plus minus five point nine nineteen acre. It left a couple words at acre lot, proposed lot eight B. Town of Clinton, as shown on a sketch plan prepared by Welch surveying. And whereas the application involves tax parcel numbers seven three nine nine four five, which is located in the A five A. Zoning district in the town of Mylan and seven 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 nine fourteen, which is located in the AR five. Funding district in the town of Clinton and whereas a short form E A F part one has been received. I think it's, yeah, and whereas in its letter dated February four, twenty twenty-one, the town of Mylan planning board notified the town of Clinton planning board. Of its intent to serve as lead agency under seeker for this application. And whereas the parcels are not located within five hundred feet of a working farm in an agricultural district. And submission of an agricultural data statement is not required and whereas all applicable fees have been paid, I assume that's true. Now therefore be it resolved, the planning board hereby grants sketch plan approval for the Hopman family trust two lot subdivision. And be it further resolved that the town of Clinton playing board consents to the town of Mylan playing board. And be it further resolved that the town of Clinton planning board consents to the town of Mylan playing board serving as lead agency on this application. And be it further resolved that the applicant will be required to depict on the preliminary plat, uh, one, a feasible driveway providing access to proposal at eight B. And obtain approval for same, uh, or maybe I should say for the location of same uh, from the town of Clinton highway department, and two, uh, a suitable building envelope on proposal at eight B, including feasible sites for well and septic systems as reviewed and verified by a licensed engineer. Um, and be it further resolved that upon its review and acceptance of the preliminary plat, uh, the planning board will schedule a public hearing on this application. And be it further resolved, the planning board hereby grants the following waivers from the submission requirements set forth in the town of Clinton subdivision and lot line adjustment regs. Are two um, submission requirements for preliminary plats. Items, uh, one F, contrawares, item, uh, one H, location and rock outcrops, wooded areas, significant features. Um, item one I, uh, tabular data regarding soil characteristics and item one K, property record card, and I, Marie, I know you asked for about the one, um, the health department stamp, I thought maybe we would just hold that off on that. You know, because maybe you're gonna get it, right?
Um, yeah, well, I don't, I'll have to find out about that, what what Larry's, Hartman's uh, intent was. I mean, I always, I always figured that even if they get board of health approval, I don't always file their board of health approval with my maps, so I generally always have the uh, permission to file stamp on my maps.
Okay. We, okay, so we'll figure that out when, next time, I guess, um.
Okay.
And I don't, I didn't think we were gonna set an escrow this time, maybe next time we'll do it, so I left that out, so that's the uh, so the waiver, that's the, the end of the resolution is just the waivers.
Okay. Okay. Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on the resolution?
Oh, are we gonna be doing um, the rec piece for this? Paul?
Yeah, I'm, uh, well, it's a very interesting question, I I um, I didn't want to, I think next time we're gonna have to figure that out, because it's uh, is this, is this an existing lot or is this a new lot?
Yeah.
I'm not gonna answer that question. I don't know the answer to that question.
I don't either.
Yeah, that's a good, good point, Arlene.
But I, I, we would normally do that, I think, at the next one, so we'll, I'll put off this difficult question.
Well, we may, we may have to uh, ask our um, um, our legal team on that one, because that is, I don't have any idea.
Yeah.
Which way to go on that one, uh, so, we'll, we'll see and we'll investigate it, Marie, okay?
Okay.
Okay, second, any discussion?
We're not doing the public hearing yet, schedule, right?
No, because they have to give us the preliminary plat.
Are, Marie, when is the next public hearing, uh, Mylan?
April sixth.
Okay.
We got time.
We.
Yeah, now your next meeting is in two weeks, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll see if I can get this for that.
Can I finish the resolution, please? Um, all in favor?
Your, I.
Jack.
Okay, are I, posed? Okay, so moved, okay. You're all set for tonight, Marie.
Very good, thank you so much, nice to see you all.
Yeah, nice to see you again, Marie, take care.
All right.
I'm Marie.
Thank you, good night.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is um, Long Pond Omega annual permit, uh. I don't know if uh, Skip is here, but uh,
I don't.
Gary, you have a.
It's pretty straightforward each year.
Yeah.
This is really not, no changes, so I'm gonna go ahead and uh, propose the town Clinton planning board to approve the following with regard to the application. Annual renewal or a special permit for the operation of Long Pond campground, one fifty lake drive. Next grid, big number. Whereas the subject campground is regulated by deed agreement of covenants and restrictions and stipulation of settlement this recorded in the Duchess County Clerk's office on one twenty four ninety one. That agreement was between CVH, Jire Corp and the town of Clinton. All application, all application fees have been paid. The zoning administrator has looked at the size. The site, if Kirk confirms by memo to the planning board dated February twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, that the F could has met the conditions outlined in the deed agreement, the covenants and stipulation of settlement. And there are no known violations on the property. There's sixty seven campsites in the campground, all camping trailers are duly licensed. There's no change to the number of sites. Current site plan is on file with the town Clinton zoning office. The F gun has installed number identification signs for each site. One park, excuse me. Long Pond campground is a Duchess County Health Department approval to operate the campground for period from April thirty, twenty twenty, to April thirty, twenty twenty one, with the permit on file. All therefore be resolved that the planning board recommends the issuance of the annual renewal and operating permit and request the town clerk to issue each such renewal permit for the period from April thirty, twenty twenty one to April thirty, twenty twenty two, when the Duchess County Health Department approval to operate the campground for the period, April thirty, twenty twenty one to April thirty, twenty twenty two is received.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Just an eye.
Aren't I?
Very eye.
Paul eye.
Sarah eye.
Okay, posed, okay, so moved, thank you, Jerry. Okay. Um, the only other thing is uh, on the agenda right now is uh, and we might as well, since we're here, um, the approval of the minutes on two nineteen. Do you send that out, um, Arlene?
No, I didn't get the chance to do that.
Okay, I thought, I thought maybe I missed it, okay, so we can approve that. Um, does anybody, Dean is here, correct?
I am.
Uh, there he is, how are you, Dean?
Good, how are you?
Good, very good, everybody's doing good. Uh, do you have any uh, words of wisdom for us tonight?
Stay warm.
Okay.
Uh, no, I mean, as, as of the last meeting, we uh, passed the uh, you know, the the ag event law, uh, the meeting before that, we passed the uh, you know, the uh, not Airbnb, but the uh, yeah, the Airbnb uh, residential hosted, non-hosted, so on and so forth. So those applications, I'm sure will be coming in soon. We haven't set fees yet, I'm waiting for John to get back to me as far as setting the fees for the uh, ag event.
We have a lot for Airbnb.
What about Airbnb?
We already have a couple, uh, three applications, the thing with the Airbnb is you need to be inspected first, make sure that the house complies before it could go before the planning board.
Right.
Um, there is one that, I don't know how we're gonna do it, because it's fairly new, it's a tent.
A tent? No, geez.
So, and, uh, Airbnb.
What are they gonna do for adequate septic?
What's that?
What are they gonna do for adequate septic and water and everything else?
Supportable paddy. So, it's complicated. They have a heat, they have, so the, um, you could Google the tentor, I guess that's the.
No, I know all about the tentor, I'm just more thinking about, you know, the board of health approval, because I, I thought one of the conditions was that I had to have board of health approval.
What, not just that, it's the definition of the Airbnb is dwelling or accessory dwelling, and this one is a tent, so.
Yeah, it's not a dwelling.
Yes, and you, we're gonna, we're gonna come across other people who's gonna be using uh, RV, uh, mobile home, all kinds of stuff.
That's camping, that should be all classified as camping.
Yes, but they're, you, they're gonna use it at Airbnb, is it allowed under our Airbnb regulations?
Well, we, we already have a restriction on camping on, on your own land. So you can't, um, I think it's thirty days, you can't camp on your own parcel for more than thirty days.
Yeah, so which means that people who's trying to do Airbnb on a, on, on RV is not gonna qualify, right?
I would think not, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but I would say not.
It, it's all those thing that we're gonna come across, with all these people who's doing it, so.
Well, I think uh, before they come in, we better, better have all our ducks in a row on things like tents and RVs and uh, campers and such, uh, because this could get pretty heated.
Well, I mean, we, we, we don't allow for a lot of these, these uses, I mean, we've had issues where people have put campers on the side of their house and um, they've tried to use that as their, their actual home. Uh, because their house was under construction for a lengthy period of time or whatever the issue was, but and and so the zoning administrator has gone out and and cited them, I mean, this is probably six years ago, eight years ago, something like that. Um, so these issues have come up, so just because we have an Airbnb law does not still provide for campers being used for that purpose.
Okay, well, since he has to inspect uh, the site before it comes to us, that should alleviate some of the problems, as long as he's up to date on.
I'll, I'll talk to John tomorrow about it, yeah.
We would appreciate that.
Can you get a variance if it's not allowed, let's say the tent, can you get a variance for that?
I still say it's camping. So it's a change of use.
Yeah. Okay, uh, anything else, uh, Dean?
No, you guys had some uh, good ones tonight.
Yeah. Um, when, uh, when do you think we're gonna know about uh, an addition to our staff here?
Oh, um, we just can't vote, uh, unless we had a special uh, meeting. We can't vote on it, so the board did our interviews, so it's just a matter of voting on it, so it won't happen until next Tuesday.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
Um, anything else?
I'm good on my end.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Dean? Okay.
All right.
Oh wait, I just wanna let you know what happened with the um, um, the uh, the variance going back, going to the ZBA, so the one um, the chapter has gone. Huh, yeah, it got denied, that means it gotta be removed.
Which variance?
The one in Schultzville.
The, the one we gave a neutral uh.
This is a public meeting and it's gonna get posted, um, in Del Farnos, yeah. Just be careful, please, I'm just reminding you guys.
Okay, sorry, we're on, we're still live, all right. All right, but I just wanna let you know, um, those variants got denied, so just to let you know. So, that means that gotta be removed, all right.
Okay, anybody got anything else? Okay, uh, well, great job, everybody, tonight, some really good resolutions, appreciate it. Uh, and all, all we need now is a motion for adjournment.
My specialty, I so move.
That's. Okay, second, and uh, discussion, all in fa- all in favor?
There, I.
Aren't I?
All.
Okay.
Maybe, uh, all right, maybe Dean knows.